Aloha, thank you everyone for joining us on this Wednesday, March 9th at 3 o'clock in room 224. We're here for the Committee on Energy Economic Development and Tourism. We have 10 fantastic individuals willing to service the state in a various number of capacities for confirmation this afternoon. And, oh, just be, sorry. There are some folks here in person at the Capitol, but for those of you who are online, I just want to let you know that this meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You'll find links to viewing options for all scheduled meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. In the unlikely event that we hit any kind of technical turbulence and this hearing takes a terrible nosedive, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business in a public notice we posted on the Legislature's website. For those participating remotely, all testified audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. So for the confirmation hearing this afternoon, I just wanted to kind of lay out how this is going to work. There's 10 of you on the list today. I'm going to introduce your GM number. I'm going to read off the supporting list of folks who have taken the time to say why you're so great for whatever the position is. Then I'm going to have you as a nominee, give us some background as well as how you hope to contribute in whatever capacity to the board that you are nominated to. So that's how we're going to run through this afternoon's hearing. So our first try and attempt at this is going to be GM 552. This is gubernatorial nominee Claire Tamamoto. She is up for the Stadium Authority Board. First on our testifiers list is Ryan Andrews from the stadium or the stadium manager.
Good afternoon Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Misalucha, and members of the committee. My name is Ryan Andrews. I'm the acting manager of Aloha Stadium. And I stand on my written testimony in support of Ms. Tamamoto's nomination and your favorable consideration in confirming her to the Stadium Authority Board. As you know, the authority is in a critical period with pursuing the future new stadium and entertainment district goal. And Ms. Tamamoto's long and proven track record in many community leadership roles will provide significant value toward that end. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We have Chris Kimimaka from Dags.
Aloha Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Misalucha and the members of this committee. Chris Kimimaka, Public Works Administrator on behalf of State Comptroller Otaguro. Dags is happy to stand on a written testimony in strong support of Claire Tamamoto's nomination to the Stadium Authority where she has already proven herself to be an invaluable asset. You go Claire. Mahalo for this opportunity.
Okay, you go too, Kristi. Audrey Hidano from Dags has submitted testimony in support. Kehau Lani Lum from Ali'i Puhai Hawaiian Civic Club in support. Karen Higa from the AIA Community Association in support. Alan Urisaki, Kimberly Mills, and Ross Yamasaki, as well as Felicity Toyama, all in support. And I think that's all we have for those who are going to join us via Zoom. And so I want to open it up for Mrs. Tamamoto. If you could introduce yourself to the committee members and tell us a little bit about your background and why you want to be on the Stadium Authority Board and what you will contribute in that capacity.
Hi, good afternoon Senator Wakai and committee members. My name is Claire Tamamoto. I'm a longtime AIA resident and actually a resident of Hawaii all my life. I was born and raised here. Was briefly away when my husband was in the military. Other than that, I have been, have resettled in AIA. Oh, sorry, I covered my face. Okay. Why do I want to be a member of the Stadium Authority? I think, I think it goes without saying that the new stadium, the new entertainment stadium development or is the largest, will be, well, maybe it's the second largest next to the rail project, Polyworks project that is, that the state is undertaking. I think it's a very important project, but it will heavily impact the residents of AIA, Salt Lake, really all the communities west of this current stadium. I want to make sure that the voices of our neighborhoods are heard, our concerns addressed, and also feel that I can also be a good voice to let the people know that they have been heard and we are trying to work on a feasible solution that will make everyone happy. And we want to, we want it to be something that everyone can use, not only events of the stadium. I have been active in the community for many, many years since coming back to Hawaii. I, I don't know what, why I've been active. I just have been. I, I feel like I have a good feel of what the community wants. And I also though, understand there are some very fiscal concerns and it's a strong response. It's a, you know, it's a responsibility that must be taken on very seriously and we must make it a self-sustaining entity. So that's some of the reasons why I, I would like to, I have applied to be nominated for the stadium board. Sorry.
Thank you Claire. Members, any questions for Mr. Tamamoto? Yes, Saran Misalucha.
Aloha Claire.
Aloha.
Thank you for, thank you for your service and for the benefit of the committee. Claire was our 2021 Community Hero Awardee. So, yes, so in your questionnaire Claire, I was intrigued by the fact that your experience in the AIA Town Center Master Plan, you pointed out to that and that it was a 23-year project for AIA. But I wanted to also, I guess underscore the fact that you said it was not government-driven. It was rather community-driven, right?
Yeah.
So I kind of worry because that may mean that you may not be as prepared because this is going to be a little bit more the opposite, which is this Aloha Stadium project is going to be government-driven. So could you kind of maybe address how your experience in that AIA Town Center Master Plan translates into the Aloha Stadium, I guess, project?
Okay, thank you for the question Senator. It is 23 years and it is ongoing. The project is not completed yet. When I say that it is community-driven, I mean to say that, or it is, it was the community that had the vision to use that empty old sugar mill property and make it into something for the community. We learned a lot over those years. We learned that, one, we couldn't do it ourselves because we didn't have a Ed Case, I mean, or Steve Case, or what's that other guy, Gates, to fund this. So we didn't bring money to the table. We just brought our determination and we brought our vision. And we learned to work with government entities, the state and the city. We met with, you know, the state library system. We went, we appeared at every council meeting that had to do with this property. We went to the state. We sat for long hours in a labor conference room to hash out a deal between the state and the city. And we, we learned lessons. So I think we are experienced as far as working with government. I don't, but from that, we also learned that government is willing to listen to the community and together everybody can make it happen. The stadium, the new development is going to be a private-public partnership. And from the private sector, you know, they, they will have some control and then a lot of control actually, but the government and the public sector is what is going to be able to keep it, the project, I want to say, touchable for the locals, usable, something that will mean something to us. So I think in that way, I, you know, I, I feel that experience will serve me well. You know, yes, it's not, you know, it's, it's coming from the other direction, but the relationships are, are all the same. You know, the partners are similar.
Thank you Claire.
Members, any further questions? Thank you Claire for being willing to drive the stadium and naset project forward. We're going to move on to GM 622. This is Jane Hurike. She is up for the Community-Based Economic Development Advisory Council. Here to testify in support of her is Mark Ritchie from DABED.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. DABED stands on its written testimony in strong support of Jane Hurike continuing on the C-BED Advisory Council. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mark. And that's all I have for supportive testimony. Jane Hurike is... There you are Jane. If you could introduce yourself to the community, tell us a little bit about your background and what you hope to contribute on the C-BED Board. Oh Jane, you're muted. Jane's still muted.
Oh, okay. Okay, is that good?
Yeah, much better.
Okay. Good afternoon and thank you Senator Wakai and committee members. I'm Jane Hurike. And I'm, and thank you for this opportunity to again become a member of the C-BED Advisory Committee representing Hawaii Island. I began on the C-BED Advisory Council in 2018 as an interim member. And at that time, there was little to no funding to assist the community. However, during the past four years, C-BED staff, Mark Ritchie, Wayne Tom, and Dennis Ling has worked really, really hard to rebuild the program by obtaining recovery funding, collection on a loan, and obtained a $1 million grant from ADA with matching funds from the state. And they also have some funding for technical assistance for the community. Therefore, C-BED now has the capacity to help small businesses who do not qualify for conventional loans to build their businesses. Being a member of this committee allows me to serve the community by being a liaison. I provide information here to the community regarding the program. And at committee meetings, I take back information about programs to the council. Some, some information on the background of why I believe that I am qualified for this position is that, for other people, to share with you further information on my background. And I worked at Hawaii County Economic Opportunity Council, Committee Action Program here on Hawaii Island with George O'Yama for 22 years. And George, as well as my father, believed that a lot of poverty was through education. And in the 90s, the emphasis was on getting a job. So through my work with HOC, since there were no jobs available in the community, George began to create.
Oh. I think we got cut off from Ms. Hurike. IT, when you get her back on, could you let me know?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Welcome back Jane.
Okay, am I back on?
Yep.
Yeah.
You can finish up.
Am I back on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, so in the 90s, we were doing a lot of community-based economic development projects. And this gave me skills to become a Hawaii County Research and Development Business Economic Development Specialist in 2000. And there I, I worked with the, I was the county's Enterprise Zone Program Coordinator, worked with the Foreign Trade Zone Opportunity Zone Programs, Census, providing businesses with technical assistance, information, some grant funding from the department as well as the council.
Okay, dropped out again. IT, if you could let me know when Jane comes back, because we're going to try to move on to our next nominee. Oh, I think she's coming back.
Okay, I'm at the end of this. I retired last year, however, I continue to assist the community because this is my way of giving back to the community. And this is, community economic development is a method of economic development that I believe in. And being on the council will allow me to serve my community. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your illustrious career helping the community. Members, any questions for Ms. Hurike? Okay, thank you for your desire for volunteering, Ms. Hurike. We're going to move on to GM 614. This is for gubernatorial nominee Craig Nakonishi for the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. On our testifiers list for Mr. Nakonishi is Len Higashi from HTDC.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Len Higashi, I am the acting executive director for HTDC, but submitted the testimony as an individual, just my personal accounts, working with the candidates. First off, thank you to the committee for having these hearings and we are very looking, much, looking forward to having a new board confirmed today. Very happy with the candidates. Appreciate it. Will stand on a, I'll stand on my written testimony, but again, Chris wanted to convey my appreciation to both the appointees and the committee. Thank you.
Well, thank you Len. We have testimony in support from Patsy Nambu, Roy Catalani, and Greg Kinkley. And that's all I have for written supportive testimony. And I would like to now call upon Mr. Nakonishi to introduce yourself to the committee and how you would like to contribute on the HTDC Board.
Thank you Chair Wakai, members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to be considered for, for board member of the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. I've been involved with the technology corporation for a while, as well as the Hawaii Strategic Development Corporation. And I've watched it evolve and, and I've helped it and tried to guide it in certain ways. My background is I've been an attorney here in Hawaii for probably longer than I'd like to say, but certainly over 30 years. And my interest in doing this, and let me, my day job is basically, part of it is being a lawyer. The other part is actually helping businesses and clients navigate to their end goal. So they basically kind of tell me what their mission, what their vision is, and I help them get from point A to point B. And that's one of the, one of my benefits, one of the things I can contribute to the organization and I've tried to contribute in the past. And there's a number of things that have happened over the years that I've, that have been good experiences. And so I've got some institutional knowledge on going forward, what we can do better as, as an organization and how we, and for example, one of the things that, you know, we do a lot better now than we have before is communicate with the legislature. It's a partnership. I see it as a very important partnership where we come and we look for resources and we say, okay, what, what's the strategic areas where we can develop technology? What do we have as Hawaii that's unique? And, and how can we accelerate that growth in that area? And it's, it's a process. We, you know, I understand that we have to work with the legislature very closely to educate, to bring these ideas and to say, what do you think? Do you think this is a good idea? And this is how we go forward and here's the plan. And, and that's part of our responsibility. And, you know, I hope to help the, the organization move in that direction. So I've got two kinds of reasons why I love this organization and I keep applying to be part of it. I am involved in technology. I've been involved in a, in a different way. My practice is in energy. So I've been involved in the development of renewable energy and a number of other energy things since the early 90s here in Hawaii. The other aspect of this is my children. They're both in technology. They're, one of them's going to college studying computer science and the other one actually works in technology for Google. So I would love for them to come home. I would love for kids, for, for their, you know, peers and friends to be able to come home, but right now it's a little difficult. And so my hope is that one day, this area will open up those opportunities to my children, grandchildren, and, and future of the Hawaii's youth. So thank you for allowing me to be considered for this position.
Thank you for your spirit of volunteerism. Members, any questions for Mr. Nakonishi? No, okay, thank you Craig. We're going to go on to our next nominee. That is GM 616, Sanja Fujiyama, nominee for the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. On our testifiers list, we have Len Higashi from HTDC.
Thank you Chair. We stand, I stand on my written testimony in support of Ms. Fujiyama. Thank you.
Thank you Len. Gwen Yamamoto Lau, Patsy Nambu, Roy Catalani, and Greg Kinkley all have submitted testimony in support. Like to call upon Ms. Fujiyama, if you could introduce yourself to the committee, give us a little bit of background as well as how you hope to contribute to the HTDC Board.
Great. Thank you Chair. Thank you Vice Chair and members of the committee. I too am very grateful and thankful for the consideration and the potential to be on this board to support HTDC. So some of my background, I was born and raised in Hawaii, but then went away to the mainland for college. So I have a degree in biochemistry and then ended up going to law school. So when I got out of law school, a way to combine my science background with my legal background was to practice in intellectual property law. So I ended up doing that in LA for nearly 15 years before coming back to Hawaii. When I came back, practiced law for a little bit at a local law firm, trying to support the innovation entrepreneurship ecosystem, trying to build an intellectual property practice. But then an opportunity arose to join the University of Hawaii in their Office of Innovation and Commercialization. And that's where, you know, we look at the technology that's coming out of the research that's going on at the university and we try to protect that technology and then figure out ways to commercialize it. So I was in that office for the last three years, trying to build up some programs, trying to figure out how to commercialize the UH innovation, that, that, all of the innovation that's coming out of the university. Was fortunate enough to have an opportunity to join the Pacific Asian Center for Entrepreneurship late last year. So that's the Student Entrepreneurship Center at the university, providing a pathway for students and faculty to take their innovations all the way from idea to investment. So, you know, jumped at that opportunity, was fortunate enough that they, they, you know, selected me for the position. So now I'm heading up that center at the university. I've been doing that for the last four months. So that's some of my background. As you can see, it's highly, there, there's lots of connection to technology, lots of connection to innovation. And that's where I'm interested. Had the opportunity while I was at OIC to work with HTDC on developing the next generation of SBIR companies. So I'd done that for the last two years. And then recently also connected with them and partnered with them to help support Kawai Small Businesses. So very familiar of what they're doing, very passionate about what, what they're doing because it highly aligns with what I'm interested in. So I hope to bring my background and my knowledge to their work and help put them on a path and come up with a strategy to further develop and get our Hawaii innovation out there to have more local and global impact.
Fantastic. Members, any questions for Mrs. Fujiyama? I just wanted to note that I failed to mention three other people that have submitted testimony in support of Sanja. They are Gary Yoshioka, Creighton Louis, and Wayne E. Noit. Again, all in support. We're going to, thank you Sanja. We're going to move on to GM 617. This is gubernatorial nominee Edward Barnabas. He is also nominated for the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. And on our testifiers list for Mr. Barnabas is Len Higashi.
Thank you Chair. I stand on my written testimony in support of Mr. Barnabas.
Okay. And let me tell you who all the cheerleaders are for Mr. Barnabas. Everyone is in support. They include Michelle Chung, Jessica Munoz, George Kai LeVai III, Bob Lipsky, Aaron Ashbourne, Julie Morikawa, Jennifer Sabas, Melanie Edet, and Brennan Morioka. Now, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Barnabas to introduce yourself to the committee and what you hope to contribute to the HTDC Board.
Aloha, everybody. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you and also to provide a little bit of background and the honor of being part of the HTDC Board. A little bit of background about myself. I was born and raised in the Washington DC area for, for all my life. Went to University of Maryland for undergrad and graduate. And about four years ago, had an opportunity to come to Hawaii for Bozawn Hamilton, which is a IT consulting company here on island, to run our innovation and technology business. And my wife was born here on the island and we thought that at one point we would bring our family here and raise our children here. And we were blessed to have the opportunity to do that. So we moved here and in that short time, it is abundantly clear that Hawaii is our home. It's the place that our daughters love. It's the place that we will stay and, and hopefully their families after them. And my career is 22 plus years, all within the technology sector, largely doing consulting and contracting for commercial and the private sector, anywhere from enterprise architecture, systems development, artificial intelligence, cyber. And that career has provided a great life for me and my family. And I feel that in this role, it's my obligation to, to pay that forward and to provide the business leadership that I've been able to accrue along the way and also provide mentorship to either smaller businesses and to students, that they can also have a flourishing career in technology and for our industry partners here, small and big, to also leverage what technology can bring so they can have successful businesses and hopefully diversify the portfolio and the economy with, with on island. Another aspect that I'm passionate about is, I am a first generation Asian American to the United States. My parents immigrated from India and when I was growing up, we didn't have much. They worked very hard, but couldn't advise me on paths to a technology career, but I was able to meet people that could point the way. And I feel that in some of the engagements I do on island, like with Climb Hawaii, I speak with a lot of students from grade school all the way up to, to university. And really they just need someone to provide a path, someone to provide inspiration and for someone to say that, yes, you also can have a career in these very complex but exciting technologies. And they also may be in the same situation that I was when I was a kid. And anyone that can provide that mentorship is important, but they also have to see that path within the industry. They have to see that there's actually jobs that are not just, that are not just temporary, but jobs that are lasting, that they can build long careers and also be on the island. So it becomes a relationship between how do we create those jobs and then how do we create a pipeline to fill those jobs as the technology economy flourishes in Hawaii. What I view my role on the, on the board to be other from, from very specific things like the SBI, SBIR funding, the manufacturing grants, to accelerator programs, really with a large influx of funding that will be given to HTDC, I think what my role is is to provide years of experience in a Fortune 500 company to help determine how we allocate resources, right? It's very important about how we take that funding and prioritize how that funding is allocated. How do we reduce risk, but also provide the greatest return for the economy? And so I feel like with my experience running a large business and a lot of folks here on island, I'll be able to provide that to Len and then the other board members. And finally, I just feel like we're right on the, we're right on the cusp, I think, of a great transformation around technology. Everyone is not talking about it. A lot of industry leaders are trying to embrace it, but I feel this is the point where we have to keep that energy and we have to provide some direction. And I feel that's what HTDC can do, anywhere from increasing awareness from the jobs that are already on island and playing matchmaker to some of the great talent that's leaving, to also building a pipeline for the future. It's, it's very important that we connect what we need in the markets that are on island more than tourism, but, but other emerging industries and to provide that pipeline for students so they get excited and they find some ways to learn how they can, they can merge into those fields. Um, but, but other emerging industries and to provide that pipeline for students so they get excited and they find some ways to learn how they can, um, uh, they can merge into those fields. Um, but also just change what the perception of the workforce is on island, right? That's important. It's a grand statement, but it happens with very small and impactful work. And so I just feel like that's what we can do. I'm, I'm very, very, um, excited to, to have this opportunity and to provide my expertise. And with that, along with the written testimony I provided or kind of a little bit about myself, I'm happy to answer any question. So I want to thank Len and the folk nominee.
Yes, I can see why you were nominated and have so much support. I appreciate your vision as well as your energy, Mr. Barnabas. Members, any questions for Mr. Barnabas? Senator Misalucia?
Aloha, Mr. Barnabas. Uh, I appreciate your enthusiasm. It's very, um, infectious, I guess. Uh, at the same time, and you, I, I read your, your bio, came very, uh, I, I guess, uh, the, the leadership as well as the, the technical skills that you bring to the table is very impressive. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of wondering, did you get a chance to read the statute on what HTDC is supposed to be doing?
I did. I received it this morning, so I had a chance to quickly review it, but, um, I had a chance to, uh, to, to look at it at, at a higher level, but yes.
Okay. So if, did you get a chance to see whether or even peripherally assess whether they're achieving the things that they're supposed to be, uh, pursuing?
Uh, I, I, I do. I think because from my understanding, there hasn't been a board for the last couple of years.
Hmm.
Um, I feel like we have the right members on the board and we have the right starting point, right? Just from me meeting Len and some other folks within HTDC. I think the mindset is important, right? Everyone is, is, at least we're aligned on where we need to be. I think the important thing is getting alignment on the tactical things that have to happen. But I do think in terms of the mission and what we're trying to achieve is targeted in the right things. I think it's, I think it's just providing focus and, um, something that provides wins, right? How do we provide some tangible returns, not two and three and four years from now? But how do we do that incrementally while we're still looking at big? So to me, it's a little bit about how do we achieve things that we can feel tomorrow, but still have our eye on something a little bit larger? So that we have something, um, that we can aspire to. So, I mean, that's the way I look at, maybe that's not, not to sound too obtuse about it, but I do think we're aligned in the right way and we're getting after it the right way.
I think the value of having a private subject person like you and others who are, uh, going to be on the board is really holding government accountable to the items on that statute, particularly, um, even things like, uh, having a tech park. Uh, for me, when I read the statute, it seems like, you know, if, if we're all in agreement, and I guess that's part of the internal discussions, it's going to be forthcoming. Um, that we pursue those, um, items on the statute and really make it a goal and, um, make sure that government is not going to be slow, but really trying to meet the demands of the, the industry. And, and as you were saying, there's so much potential out there and we would like to count on people like you to be able to bring to bear those skill sets so that we can bring everybody along into that, further into the journey.
Right, right. I, I, that's important. And I think, you know, I'm not like Craig, I'm not a lawyer. So maybe things in terms of law and statutes, like that's not my expertise, but from running a large company or being a leader in a large company, every day we make decisions on what we're going to invest in. Those decisions have to be run through some rubric or some sort of attributes where you're gaining the, the stakeholders that are involved and the mission you're trying to execute. Which of those, how do you allocate the funds that you're getting from the government? We all know funding is scarce. So we have to use that in a very judicious way. But every big company, just like the government, has to make decisions on how they allocate those funds. So I think it's really about making the right allocations first and also being transparent about why you made those decisions.
I'm heartened by what I hear, I hear here. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Members, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Barnabas. Appreciate your time. Oh, you're welcome. We're gonna move on to GM six, one, nine. This is Bernice Glenn. She is also nominated for the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. And wow, we get our first live testifier here.
Yay.
Welcome, Bernice. Good, uh, well, actually, before I allow you to, or turn the floor over to you, I'd like to tell you who all your fans are. And they include, uh, oh, first Len Higashi, HTDC.
Uh, thank you, Chair. We stand, I stand on my written testimony in support of Ms. Glenn.
Okay. And the others all in support include Ryan Ozawa, Teddy Anderson, Timothy Faulkner, Dave Kozuki, and John Wallerstrom. And, you know, Bernice, there's been like three or four others that have submitted late testimony. I don't have them on the list, but you've got like a whole army of people that are behind you on this. So if you could, um, just share with us on, on the committee a little bit about your background and how you hope to contribute to HTDC here.
Thank you very much, um, Chair Wakai and Vice Chair Misalucia and, and Senator Fevila and other members of the committee. Really appreciate this opportunity and staff. So I, it's funny, looking at, um, the other folks on the board, we are, have very many ties. Um, and what I've seen over my decades, I have to say, of interaction with HTDC, I joined them as a staff person thirty-six years ago. And that was when we were first launching many of these programs to include the Manoa Innovation Center and many of the other assets. One of the things that, uh, Vice Chair Misalucia just brought up, which is really important, and this is, I think, very inherent in what, uh, uh, certainly in what, uh, Len Higashi has focused on is um, a whole community support effort, that it's, that there has to be proven demand for the services and for the, um, efforts from the industry itself, from small businesses, from Hawaii innovators. What I've seen in my years since the time that I joined HTDC and I've had experiences working for Toyota and Motorola and in large industry myself as a small company in Hawaii. Um, but also I was the Oahu Economic Development Board, uh, Director. So we did industry clusters and, and, uh, created some assets there. Um, and then with nonprofits, um, now with the Hawaii Defense Alliance supporting them as a volunteer, but prior with Pictor, which spun out Elemental Accelerator, there are many lessons learned for Hawaii. And one of the biggest things is what a lot of people will call product market fit or demand signals. So, you know, if government picks oftentimes, um, an industry sector or a project because it seems to meet all of the needs of all of the constituents, but if it's not actually pulled together with stakeholders and the ultimate market demand uh, criteria, similar to what Ed was talking about, that, that rigorous, um, rubric that you have to pass something through to see if it's worth doing or not. That, I think, is where the board can really help and bring in, um, our outside connections and our, um, access to data, our access to research and certainly, um, look at the demand signals. What are the demand signals that are, that Hawaii can capture? Um, because we are about to be in a massive wave of federal funding that is now just starting. It will be over hundreds of millions. It will actually be in the billion mark. And what we've seen from Dbed's really good work on defense economy is that if we're not positioned with the right programs and the right workforce, that will just sweep right through us and we won't catch that wave. And they're, luckily for us, they're sets of waves. So we've got shots at this, but we have to really discern each of those waves and, um, and what that means is we have to look at community-based support from local businesses, from businesses that want to come into Hawaii to catch that wave too. We have to anchor them to make sure that they are offering opportunities for Hawaii companies as well as for Hawaii's workforce and our pipeline for our children. So it's really, the onus is on us to make sure that we position Hawaii to be able to capture as much as is coming in. And there's, there, there's a lot coming in. So, um, it's, it's, uh, a really a privilege for me to have, um, engaged with all of those groups in Hawaii. Um, and now to, you know, hopefully, uh, if approved, um, serve HTDC and this committee.
Yeah, your background is just so perfect. Each, each of the nominees, whether it's legal or in, uh, the private sector and you with your illustrious background with the military in particular, and everything you said is absolutely true. There's so much money coming in, but how is Hawaii positioned to take advantage of that, right? We can't let it flow through to Guam or some other, uh, location. Um, so I think you, you bring a very interesting and, and relevant, uh, set of skills into, into the board. Members, any questions? So for Bernice?
Oh, I just wanted to, oh, Chair, yeah, just wanted to say thank you, Mahalo for, uh, stepping up. Um, did you get a chance to read the statute?
Yes.
Okay. Was there anything particularly that caught you that you think that you could lend your expertise on?
Yeah, I, I was, um, you know, it's funny, when I, I read it, it was, um, very, uh, um, I would say gave me a really positive sort of rush that to have had that foresight, um, those many years ago, to have created the statute that then sets up all of the different elements of infrastructure and support that government can do while reaching out beyond it. I really think the one aspect of the statute that I would love to do is to focus on that whole community support to ensure sustainability of whatever the projects are, programs are that pass through the rubric of the review of, of this body as well as of the HTDC team. If we can really ensure that there is support in the private sector, whether it's big companies coming through or companies that are here in Hawaii or other federal agencies or other federal dollars. Um, I think that's the part, and certainly academia, to really ensure that we have a whole community support to sustain each one of those, because each one of the elements that's described is really important. But without a whole community, um, wrapped around it, they can easily end up with, um, uh, less than fully, um, resource efforts. So I would want to pledge to help Len and the team with that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Chair.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I just think that all what you're saying and all you bring into the table from being there from the beginning and then look that you're gonna be gone, look like in twenty twenty-four. So Chair, is there, we can put another ten years on? See this thing to be finished? I mean, she has the knowledge. I mean, gee, we're all gonna be losing her in twenty twenty-four. We'll get to have her to see the whole thing to be finished. Uh, I'm just happy to see you and having somebody in front of us, uh, speaking to us. So good luck and, uh, you know, hopefully you can stay longer than twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Bernice, you bring up some interesting points there. I mean, because you were there at the beginning and I assume that HTDC was probably put together forty years ago. And you mentioned how visionary this enabling statute was, but the sad part of it is that all of that vision from forty years ago, still in twenty twenty-two has not been realized. And we really, and I'm hoping that this group that we're going to, uh, confirm today is, is the, the group that actually turns the page and makes that document from forty years ago, the statute from forty years ago, really come alive. So we appreciate your willingness to come forward and all of the, uh, background that you bring to help push technology forward in this state.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a privilege. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for showing up in person. We're gonna move on to our next GM. That is six, two, zero. This is Vincent Kimoro. Also the gubernatorial nominee to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. Welcome, Vince. Um, let me go through your support list first. Uh, we have Len Higashi from HTDC.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I stand on my written testimony in support of Mr. Kimora.
Thank you, Len. And Mr. Kimora, here is your, uh, support, uh, list. It's Esar Mostafun Funeshad, excuse me for mispronouncing your name, Esar, uh, Maureen Dara, Ryan Ozawa, Annabella Bruch, Katie Zuber, Reba Lopez, and Roger Kiyomura, all individuals in support of your nomination. Um, Vince, if you could introduce us, yourselves to us and tell us how you want to contribute to the HTDC board.
Well, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Uh, quick background, myself, I'm from Hawaii, but was raised in Asia most of my life. Graduated school, high school in Beijing and, and, uh, went to undergrad in Oregon. Uh, coming back to Hawaii, then I actually went and worked for KPMG for many years. Um, did some projects related to some technology over here on islands and then eventually went back to Asia to work. So through my endeavors, um, it was really fascinating because I got to see when one of the proj, projects in particular, a DoD project setting innovation clusters around the Asia Pacific region. And the fascinating thing about this particular, uh, organization is it was looking at the intersect between industry, academia, and government. And how the three work together in different regions and different cultures and how they can actually spur more innovation and job growth. Uh, I think from that point in time, it really kind of leveraged myself getting MBA from Thunderbird, which is part of ASU now. And, and then eventually becoming a startup entrepreneur myself. So my last endeavor was a, a small data science company called Smart Yields. We were focusing on the ag sector, uh, small farming uh, with a bunch of, uh, sensors and IOT and whatnot. And that was really fascinating because you know, through my experience here, I, I went through three of the incubator programs on island and then four others around the world, from Hong Kong all the way to, to Rome and Switzerland too. And I think seeing the level and breadth of what other communities similar to Hawaii are doing was really a great perspective. One, because, uh, over the last at least ten years here, I really believe we, we made leaps and bounds. Are we there yet? No, but will we ever be? It's a work in progress. But I think compared to others and what others doing, what I hope to bring to this organization is obviously, you know, my experiences, uh, the network and other communications in terms of how might we be able to look at things differently? As well as obviously, you know, beta testing and all that stuff. You know, we, we're not going to have the perfect solution. But if we can really test this with actual data and demand. You know, this is something, again, this is a much larger situation, but it plays off to what we've done already. You know, back in the days of bringing design thinking to Hawaii and supporting our K through twelve education, back in the days of the dual-use community. When we were starting to really pull and push a lot of that, uh, those organizations from the military and private sector going back and forth. So uh, my new capacity, uh, with the University of Hawaii in the Office of Innovation Commercialization is really exciting because now we launch a new federally funded incubator program for supporting faculty. And I really believe UH as an R1 university can and will step up even greater to what we have seen in the past. So I'm excited to be here as an entrepreneur, excited to be here to support, again, this public-private partnership growth sector, as you alluded to earlier. And, um, happy to support my community. Thank you.
We're happy to have you step forward. Members, any questions for Mr. Kimora?
Me, actually, the same question. Did you read?
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, you know, besides the, the tech parks, you know, which is really exciting too, and a lot of, a lot of regions utilize that. It's, it's a special zone. There's a lot of ability to compound a lot of big ticket expensive equipment, et cetera. The logistics side of things are really important, but I think the one thing that really excites me on is really, of course, funding. Yeah, every, every startup entrepreneur needs funding. In addition to that, they need support and mentorship. So, you know, I think I can bring a lot of that component and awareness. We have an amazing community of, of ecosystem of supporters for this, by Hawaii for Hawaii. But it's true, you know, besides the human capital piece of this, we do need to start showcasing this on a global scale. You know, one of the things as an entrepreneur was, I always knew that I wouldn't be able to leverage the amount of capital here Hawaii, which is why I went overseas. And I think that's something where people love Hawaii. Hawaii has a special place in many individuals' hearts and they want to be able to support it. And maybe have a little piece of paradise too, but in a way that they can. And I think that's really where we're going to bring a lot of that emphasis and visibility to it.
What is the potential of technology in Hawaii?
Well, it's, I think it's as, as great as we, uh, want it to be, but also, you know, going back to, and again, going on for decades of, of work. You know, I think, um, when you think about where the growth is in terms of the military side with Indo-PACOM, obviously data science, cybersecurity, computers, all that is a no-brainer. In terms of small-scale manufacturing, right, manufacturing, things like that. It makes a lot of sense in terms of resiliency. You know, does it make sense in terms of large scale? No. But I think as a testing and evaluation, a proof of concept, as the term is used, Hawaii can and has been in other industries, i.e. tourism, hospitality, et cetera. You know, can we translate that to others in terms of, you know, dual-use? Absolutely. We've done it. Question is, can we maintain it and keep it here? And again, prime that human capital pump through our education system so that those, you know, businesses, you know, train the next generation here and we have that constant pump. And I think that's where folks like Barnaby and others will really add value to this vision.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Members, any further questions?
So you, you see that the potential for? Not so far. I thought I was on Zoom.
You're muted.
Anyway, so, uh, going forward, do, do you think that, um, I, I know maybe not in your short term, because you guys all have short terms, but hopefully we can keep you guys on a little longer. I, I see a diverse, uh, from agriculture to a lot of volunteerism in your community, which is great, but you really think that it which is great, but you really think that in the time that you have working with this diverse group, that we can kind of meet at least halfway? Because when I got here to the capital, I think we were just transferring from paper to laptops, which was great because there's no way I was gonna look at a stack of papers that high. I know the house is coming over, but I didn't realize how, you know, when they said 2002, everything was going to crash, 2000 was going to crash? The reason why I think our state didn't crash because we still wasn't at all. I think they didn't realize it, we was at all. But everybody was worrying about the data, see the data, see the data. But we wasn't on that platform like other states and other countries. So I came to realize it when I was here that how, I don't use the word behind, but it is. We've always talked about the tech schools in West Oahu. How does all these guys want to invest this money? Reason why I bring this up is because at our huli-huli treatment plant, there's a technology for harvesting the energy or the gas. Yep. And the place that does it is not even smaller than this building, way smaller. But you know who the people that's doing the technology are putting it together? Guys do the construction is Hawaii. The guys who put in the technology in there is from India. We have nobody that can do that technology. How are we not harvesting our kids for these programs so that they can capitalize on these great jobs? Not flying somebody from another country to put it together and then come and maintain it for us? You know, because they gotta go back. I mean, no matter what, they cannot stay in America. But they gotta come back and they gotta come and update it, did the programs. Why are we not having that? You know, I don't see that it's your fault, but I just was kind of shocked when I went on the tour, realized that technology-wise, they all want to come, all these tech companies want to come here, but there's no, I'm not saying they're not receiving it, but it's not happening as fast as we speak. Since I've been here in his committees and all the people that come before us, I don't see it progressing. And where do you think that block would be for us as a state going forward in what we're talking about right now? Because he has a lot of these ideas since I've been here. And it's great ideas, great moving forward. But just like with agriculture, we tell them how much land they leave, right? Every year we come out with bills, but they still don't tell us what we need. But I think I need from you guys, or I guess us, we need from you guys, where are we at now? And what do we need to get forward into all of the things that we talk about here in the capital moving forward for the future of our kids and their kids to sustain Hawaii in the tech world?
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, the question was like that, but yeah.
No, and, you know, to answer your kind of comment slash question and two, one is I think the biggest challenge we've seen is lack of knowledge transfer. You know, the component where it comes down to looking beyond just making a dollar off of a sale and looking to what, who is willing to actually invest in? And it's really that impact conversation. You know, it's that piece where it's not about selling to this, you know, technology. It's about, okay, how can we create certificates or other programs to incentivize, to actually create local demand? Because it makes good business sense for these organizations who are, let's just say, based in India, where it's like, well, the cost of transportation, all this stuff, it's not cost-effective. So how do we, public-private partnerships, support that endeavor, lower the barriers? And then going to your second point, it's really about managing risk. I think, you know, being an entrepreneur is all about risk. It's, there's a reason why people become entrepreneurs is because, one, I see it as they want to better society, better themselves, better something in a way. And I've always believed the best entrepreneurs are those individuals who have seen the extreme opposite, perspective-wise, maybe poverty, socioeconomic, whatever it is. But it's those individuals who feel like they can make an impact on the world. The question to us and even to this board is how can we enable and empower them? How can we de-risk it for them? And then obviously to you yourselves is how can we support this through taxpayer dollars and other means and measures and programs? So I believe that if we can provide the right level of data to show what works and it doesn't work, if we can break it down to saying, hey, let's try this, short term. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, we'll figure out why it didn't work. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So with the vast experience that you have as an entrepreneur, as having nine organizations that you've kind of led, as I'm reading here. So Vince, Vincent, I am going to count on you, as well as Bernice and the rest of the board, to really push Len. Not that he needs pushing, but by the way, Len, you did a fantastic job with choosing this board. It seems like a very solid board. But I want to make sure that you use this as a foundation document, the statute, so that then we can move forward. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do, obviously, on the periphery, but if we focus our attention on what is in the statute and really pursue those further, I think our, the vision that was set 40 years ago would be accomplished. So I wish you well, all of you, because I think we are very fortunate to have the kind of caliber, the kind of talent that came before us as a committee this afternoon.
Thank you for your consideration.
How much people, members, any further questions? Vince, I have some questions. I appreciated Senator Favella's question because we shouldn't, from a policy standpoint, just be creating tech jobs for mainland or foreign people to come over here to take. We gotta figure out how HTDC creates all of those jobs and then we get DOE, Community Colleges, UH, to make sure that those jobs that we're creating are filled by local people. But to that end, I mean, we, technology, when we talk about it as a diversification platform, it's so wide and squishy, right? I mean, everything from aerospace to marine science to healthcare to software to whatever, amongst all of the array of sectors under the umbrella of technology. What do you, what do you think are your top three areas where you think Hawaii can and should be global leaders in?
Well, I mean, we played to our strengths to what we've seen. Obviously, for, you know, going back to the icon of impact. So obviously, climate resiliency, climate change, everything related to that. I mean, SOUS is doing an amazing job. When you think of COE, you know, we have a lot of past performance and experience in unmanned air vehicles, you know, kind of the applied research laboratory stuff that they've been working on, drones, et cetera. We played to our strengths in terms of, you know, looking beyond the stars. So related to astronomy, et cetera. I mean, again, it's things that, that UH in particular has been focusing a lot of external funding on. My personal, obviously, which has been close to home is around agriculture and data around that. You know, I think, you know, when you think of food security as national security, that's important too because it stems into the culture components around, you know, everything related to, you know, how Hawaiians, native Hawaiians, practice land use as a form of agricultural practice, but also as a form of workforce development, makes a whole lot of sense to me. You know, the realization that maybe things were done before or actually were kind of done in a different perspective. We just weren't able to actually acknowledge and consider it. But coming, look at now in terms of how they did regenerative practices, makes a whole lot of sense. So I'd love to go much deeper in that one too. And then even going on the ag side too, Hawaii has and will be, again, a hub around innovation in food. Question is what? You know, clearly, it's not going to be supported with Dole did or the seed industries or whatnot. So what does the next frontier look like for us? Love to see what that looks like. And obviously oceans, you know, as I mentioned before, oceanography, SOUS. You know, I think the neat thing about oceans versus also, you know, space travel too, things like that. It's extreme environments. You know, the fact that we all hear about, you know, we have majority of the macro climates and more micro climates in the rest of the world lends a really interesting perspective to us, especially going to my earlier point on testing and evaluation, proof of concept. We should be a magnet for universities and businesses saying, hey, you know what? We'll fear it away for you to come here and actually work here and build and test on a global scale here in our little islands. But at the same time, we're saying, what are the needs? You know, workforce element-wise, how can we retool and train so you don't have to keep bringing folks over? Let's make this a good business sense economically. Hope that answers your question.
That sure did. I asked for three, I got four. Appreciate that. Thank you, Vincent. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our last nominee on the agenda. That is GM 621, Rick Volner. He is a new gubernatorial nominee, also to the Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. And we have on our testifiers list Len Higashi.
Thank you, Chair. I know that Mr. Volner had worked to notify this committee that he's not able to testify today. He had his day job basically pulled him in and he said he wasn't going to be able to make it to the hearing. So I'll read maybe just a few sentences from my testimony, if you don't mind, on his behalf. I met Rick recently as appointed by the governor. He is the representative. He sits on the Maui Economic Development Board. So he brings to HTDC a perspective from Maui, which I think is very helpful, especially coming from a neighbor island. And I was very impressed to learn of his extensive experience in agriculture, which I think will play nicely with our value-added agriculture manufacturing programs. Very excited to have Mr. Volner join our board and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Members, as Len mentioned, Mr. Volner is not here. I had a wonderful conversation with him, as well as all the other nominees, and found Mr. Volner to be amply qualified and just really open-minded. And I think that's the important thing for all of these nominees is that they're just open to innovation and chasing down opportunities. So Mr. Volner certainly had showed that, those characteristics. So I'm just to assure you that despite his not, his presence not being here with us today, that he is just as illustrious as the nominees that we have heard from to Zoom as well as in this room. So if you don't mind, members, I think we have heard from all 10 of these nominees, actually nine nominees, one of them has two GMs, nine nominees. And if you don't mind, would like to just advise and consent on all of them all at once, if that's okay with everyone. Okay. So just for formality sakes, I'll just read quickly before Senator Mr. Litch takes the vote. On GM 552, Claire Kawamoto to the Stadium Authority to advising consent. GM 622, Jane Horike to the Community-Based Economic Development Advisory Council to advise and consent. GM 614, gubernatorial nominee Craig Nakonishi to the HTDC Board to advise and consent. GM 615 is also Craig Nakonishi for advising consent. GM 616, Sandra Fujiyama to advise and consent on her being on the HTDC Board. GM 617, Edward Barnabas also up for the HTDC Board for advising consent. GM 618, again, Mr. Barnabas for the HTDC Board. For both Craig and Mr. Barnabas, they're filling out the two terms. That's why they are mentioned twice in the GMs. And GM 619, Bernice Glenn, also on the HTDC Board to advise and consent. GM 620, that is Vincent Kimoro for the HTDC Board to advising consent. And GM 621, that is Rick Volner, also to the HTDC Board to advise and consent. Members, any questions on all of the nominees that are before us this afternoon? No? If not, Senator Misalusha, I recommend advising consent for all of the nominees on today's agenda, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Chair. This is for Committee on Energy, Economic Development, and Tourism. And for the aforementioned GMs, that was mentioned by the Chair. Chair recommends advice and consent. Vice Chair Misalucha votes aye. Senator Lee. Senator Revere is excuse, Senator Favella. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Fantastic. Thank you, members. Thank you for your time and for being here. And congratulations to all the nominees who are now confirmed.
Thank you again for your service.